Good evening. Welcome to the October 29th Zoning Board of Appeals hearing. I'll just take a minute and read some introductory comments and then we will get started. First, I'll introduce the board. I'm Kimberly Bealyn. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. To my far right is Ken Foreman. He is the Vice Chairman. To my immediate right is TJ Hurry. He's the Clerk of the Board. To my left is Ed Van Kuren. He's a regular voting member. And to Ed's left is Paul Murphy, who's also a regular voting member. Draude Guychecker is our Recording Secretary, and she's at the table tonight. Suri Vodro is our Zoning Administrator, and also present is Special Town Counsel Mark Bobrowski, or, excuse me, Special Counsel to the Zoning Board, Mark Bobrowski. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and considering requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. Decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and allow full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. All of these hearings that are on tonight are continuations so that they have already been opened and read into the record. The applicant will have 15 minutes to make a presentation. This may be extended because I know last time we allowed some extensions, and I know that this is an important topic for everyone. The Board will then question the applicant, and the public may be invited to comment tonight depending on how we proceed here. Public comments should be directed only at the project. People speaking should refrain from making personal or derogatory comments, but can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or may just be a question about the nature of the project that we can try and get answered for you. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the Chair, should come to the podium, and state your name for the record. We will then determine whether we can close the hearing, whether we need more information, and we'll proceed from there. At the outset, can I just, if anybody's recording this meeting, I just would ask you to raise your hand, and I will go through and request your names for the record. So I'll start with you.
Lainine Orion. Delma Denfries.
Okay. Is anyone else recording?
John Carlton Watts.
And that is everyone who's going to be recording tonight. Okay. Thank you. So to start, we have two appeals that last time had been open, 68-15 and 70-15. These both concern, we've already addressed, well, one concerns win one. We've already addressed win one. And tonight, the presentation will be on win two. So these will be heard together, but they're being decided separately as independent appeals. So TJ, can you just read, I guess, the appeals, and then we'll invite, I believe, the applicant to the board.
All right. We have application 68-15, Neil Elizabeth Anderson, 154 Blacksmith Shop Road, as well as application 70-15, Okaugawa et al., 154 Blacksmith Shop Road.
And I just also wanted to make a comment at the outset. The zoning board today alone received over 100 pages from the attorneys. I know that I have a job, and the majority of the board does. I believe everybody has other things to do as well. This is a volunteer position. So to get that much information at the last minute is contrary to board policy. Our policy is that it be submitted a week in advance. So I know that, I've had some opportunity, I think everybody here has had some opportunity to review the materials that have been submitted, but certainly, given the importance of these appeals, haven't really had time to sit with it and read it and consider it. So I believe we'll focus tonight on presentations. We may not go into deliberations based on the late submissions. So if you want to speak, or whoever.
Good evening. Alexander Watt Anderson's point of order, Madam Chair. I understand the 15-minute limitation, and I'm prepared to assert myself to that. In fact, I'd like to divide it, just a brief 10-minute presentation now, and reserve a five minutes for rebuttal, if that's acceptable.
I'm sure if that's acceptable to the Board, which I'm sure.
Sure.
Thank you. Just very quickly on win one, we don't need to go over that in detail. I mean, it was decided in the elder appeal. That decision is now binding the town, having voluntarily dismissed its appeal to land court. So I would just suggest that this court, I mean, this board would iterate that decision essentially the same. Now, with respect to win two, just factually speaking, I think the Board is aware that win two is an identical size wind turbine to win one, same size. It's in the same zoning district, on the same parcel of land, similarly situated, and it should be treated identically with that of win one. And the appeals court has determined that win one required a special permit. Similarly, win two, not having received a special permit, should be viewed as unlawfully operating now. And I won't go into the legal discussion. That's all contained in my prior brief to the Board, the provisions of the local bylaws. Really, I think tonight's question is going to focus on the timeliness of the Andersons' appeal here. And briefly with respect to that, the question of whether the Andersons should have appealed the issuance of the building permit under Section 8 and 15 of General Law 40A, or whether they were entitled to, as they have done, to appeal within the six-year statute of limitation allowed under Section 7. Now, as I, I have submitted an affidavit of the Andersons with the materials, and the Andersons attest that they received no notice of the issuance of that building permit, either by actual notice or by any other verbal or written notice that it had issued. I think it's important to remember that the win one began turning, for just a brief period of time, on March 23rd, 2010. The building permit for win two had issued previously on March 18th, 2010. And win one really didn't begin turning in earnest until approximately April 5th, 2010. The Andersons didn't know at any time during that period of time, during April, during the 30 days that would have been required under Section 8/15 to appeal the issuance of that building permit. So therefore, I would urge you to find that they were not required to have applied under, appeal the issuance of the building permit. There's really two cases that you're going to hear a lot about tonight, I'm sure. That's the Gallivant case and the Connors case. Gallivant is a pretty easy case. Gallivant dealt with a case in the city of Wellesley, which by their local bylaws required actual notice to a butter's, as well as published notice of the application for a building permit. So the butter it issue had actually received notice of that. The Connors case is a little bit different. There was no published notice. There's no actual notice given of the application for a building permit. But in that case, the appellant, or the appealing land, or neighbor, had actually seen the building permit at the building department through arriving there at another time on a separate matter. Within the 30-day limit, and the court held that that was sufficient to put them on notice so that they had a reasonable opportunity to appeal the building permit. None of those situations are present here with respect to the Andersons. They had no notice of the issuance of the building permit on the 18th, and not thereafter during the 30-day period. So the Section 7 course of action, which the Andersons did use, allows for the, again, ask, the request for an enforcement action, and then appeal to this board in case of a denial there. And that's a six-year statute of limitations. Again, we're within the six years because the building permit issued on March 18th, 2010. So that period would end in 2016. So the Andersons' appeal is timely. The burden is on the town to plead what is called latches. Latches is a defense to a failure to file an action, an enforcement action, within a reasonable time during that six-year period. Even though you were within the six-year period, you could still be forestalled. And the rule of law on that, although the cases differ factually, how that's applied, is that there must be an unreasonable, unjustified delay in bringing the action, which works to the detriment of the landowner. In other words, that they've made substantial expenditures in reliance on the failure of one to bring an enforcement action. Well, under the facts of this case, and it is a heavily fact-laden inquiry that you're going to have to make here, is that during the summer of 2010, the Andersons were directed towards, their efforts towards win one, which was causing them distress. Win two was not erected at that point. In fact, it didn't go online until 2012. So on August 25th, 2010, the Andersons had initiated the appeal process with respect to win one, with respect to whether it should have a cease and desist order. The town was certainly on notice at that point that the issue of whether a special permit was required was actively at issue. As the Board will recall, although we technically succeeded with this board, we failed to reach the requisite number of votes. At that point in time, 2011, this board had essentially ruled that special permit was not required. And then that had to go to Superior Court. All during this time, the town was aware, and yet they actively proceeded with the completion of win two.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I think he's off. Yep. Sorry, people were just saying that they couldn't hear due to the noise. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay.
Could he speak into the microphone?
I think the microphone's on. If you want to speak up in case people can't hear you. He has to be directed toward this direction because people are home and it is being recorded.
Is this on?
The mic is for the TV.
Oh, yeah, for the TV.
Oh, it's not for the room? So it's not just delay. And I suggest to you that the Andersons' delay was reasonable under the circumstances. They already had an appeal with respect to win one that had not yet been resolved in the courts. And when it was finally resolved in the courts, when the judgment finally came back from Superior Court on July, I mean, June, I think it was June 8th, they filed the, this request for enforcement on the very same day. So I don't think it was unreasonable. There was no sense in duplicating litigation, which everybody knew was going to apply equally to win two as it was to win one. Just quickly, it's not just the delay, but the town is also going to have to prove detriment. And I would suggest to you that win two stands on a substantially different footing. As demonstrated in my papers, I believe that the loan through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act is forgivable at this point. I don't think the town has pursued that with any vigor, but under the documents, you can clearly see that they've met all the requirements for forgiveness of that loan. Furthermore, they've been generating income since 2012, which is essentially free money because they haven't actually put out any money for the wind turbines. So I don't think there's any demonstrated detriment to the town here, although they have the burden to carry. I haven't reviewed their materials yet. That's why I want to reserve my five minutes for rebuttal. I would suggest to you that whatever injury the town has suffered, that was self-inflicted. They knew since 2005, with the initial feasibility study, which stated that the town was going to be required to get a special permit, that the issue of a special permit was in the air, and yet they proceeded blindly without that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Christopher Senney. I represent in Action 70-15 Before You, which is an appeal, Barry and Diane Funfar and Linda Okaugawa. I will be able to keep my remarks within the 15 minutes that counsel had agreed should be allocated for these two appeals. I do have a binder that I'd like to pass out, but I will direct you only to four pages within that binder, so it should be relatively brief.
Thank you.
Before I do, I would just like to make two general points about this appeal. This is three residents who have recently initiated an enforcement request, asking the zoning enforcement officer to cease operation of win two. It was filed five days after the Supreme Judicial Court made the final decision, which solidified our understanding that win one was required to have received a special permit. And I'd like to stress that not all neighbors are the same, and not all neighbors know the same information at the same time. I'm going to speak mostly tonight about Linda Okaugawa, who lives at 821 West Thalmouth Highway. She is one of the three residents on whose behalf I filed the new enforcement request on June 8th of this year. Linda did not know what other neighbors may have known once win one began to operate. And the question we're examining tonight is not, what did people generally know? And it's also not a question of, what did they know about a turbine project at the wastewater treatment plant? There's a specific question. We have two different sets of statutes, all under our zoning statute. One is a combination of Section 8, 14, and 15. And when you combine those three sections, any order of a zoning administrator that someone disagrees with, that might be a stop work order, it might be a cease and desist, it might be a denied building permit, or a granted permit, can appeal it to your board. And you have a quasi-judicial role to fill in examining whether or not that order or decision was unlawful. And that 15, Section 15, says, any appeal under 8, 14, and 15 has to be done within 30 days of that order. And that's why many of the orders that our zoning enforcement officer issues says at the bottom, you can appeal this decision if you're unhappy with it within 30 days. But we also have Section 7, which says, any party can initiate a zoning enforcement request anytime within six years after a building permit was issued, or 10 years if a violation developed and there was no building permit. So that's a longer period of time. And the question that the courts have dealt with, and your counsel's going to be able to advise you on this question, is, did the complainant know enough during the first 30 days after that, in this case, building permit was issued, to have understood that it might have been issued illegally and initiate an appeal of that to this board? And what we know is that it's not enough to know generally that there's some kind of project going on. It has to be specific. And actually, the case law that helps us the most is the case I lost in front of Judge Ruffo at the Superior Court in Barnstable on win one. And he talked about this issue, timeliness. And in the memo I submitted earlier, actually, last night to counsel, and I would hope that among the papers you've received, a legal memorandum from me dated yesterday, Judge Ruffo wrote this about this very question, timeliness. "The plaintiffs have established that under the circumstances, this is not a case where the issuance of the win one building permit should have come to their attention within 30 days of June 30th, 2009. There simply was no credible evidence presented at trial to suggest that the plaintiffs had actual or constructive notice of the issuance of the win one building permit. Absent adequate notice, affording the plaintiffs the opportunity to bring their challenge within Section 15, the 30-day period, this court may properly consider the plaintiff's claims under Section 7." So focusing on Linda Okaugawa, I ask you to turn to Tab 1 in the booklet I just handed out. That is a timeline. It's a one-page set of dates and events. So the win two building permit was issued on March 18th, 2010. That means that the period of time we have to examine in order to understand whether this is an 8, 14, 15 matter, where you had only 30 days, or a seven matter, where you have six years, is from April, March 18th to April 18th, 30 days from the issuance of the building permit. On March 23rd, 2010, win one was commissioned. On April 6th, 2010, it began to operate consistently. By the way, jumping back to the top, Tab 2 is the building permit. That is the building permit for win two. So then if we go further, on May 5th, the elders who are here tonight had a meeting with the Assistant Town Manager and Zoning Enforcement Officer and urged that win two be stopped. Now here's, the point I'm trying to make is that that's not Linda Okaugawa. So the elders were troubled by win one and called the town, and Heather Harper and Aladi Agor were nice enough to go to their home and have a conversation about the distress from win one. But just because the elders knew about win two, they might not have known that a building permit had been issued, but they knew that there was a win two, doesn't mean Linda Okaugawa knew that. On May 28th, the supplier, the manufacturer of the turbine, Vestas, sent an email to the town's engineering consultant, who's here tonight, asking, have you done a sound study for win two? On June 4th, the ZBA and the planning board held a joint meeting to discuss the sound pressure problems from win one. On June 10th, the town held a meeting to discuss the scope of a sound study that would now be done, now that we know win one is causing distress. On June 15th, Assistant Town Manager wrote to Barry Funfar, saying the town had already implemented measures 39 times to reduce the negative impact of win one. On June 15th, the town sent a survey. Now here's the first time we see Linda Okaugawa. The town sent a survey to the neighbors, including Linda Okaugawa, asking about distress from win one. Linda completed the survey, saying, no problem. This is the very first communication from the town to Linda. So this is Linda, and you will see later in Tab 3 that you have an affidavit from Linda Okaugawa attesting to this under pains of penalties for perjury. On June 29th, Vestas sent an email to the town engineering consultant, saying that, "We need town to sign off on potential sound pressure problems caused by the proposed win two." On June 30th, the town engineering consultant sent an email to the Assistant Town Manager, saying that the town should provide such a letter. On July 1st, the town's engineer drafted such a letter. This is a letter exempting Vestas from all responsibility for distress that might be caused by win two, in light of the known distress of win one. On August 3rd, the town received a warning letter from its contractor passing along these concerns of Vestas. And on the same day, the town had Jerry Patamus write a letter back to Vestas, saying, "We understand the risks. We understand the sound pressures. We're taking responsibility." And then finally, getting back to Linda Okaugawa, on October, sometime in October, and Malcolm Donald is here and Linda is here, Malcolm knocked on Linda Okaugawa's door and told her about win two, showing her a map and indicating how close it would be to her property. He also showed her a pamphlet he had prepared. This is the first time Linda learned anything about a second turbine. Now, your counsel will tell you that if any single complainant cannot be charged with enough knowledge during that key 30-day period, the appeal is timely. And what I'm saying to you is that Linda Okaugawa had no problems with win one. She could see it from Route 28. She could even see it from her property through the trees if she looked in one particular direction. She was not upset about the turbine. She didn't know any of the other residents along Blacksmith Shop Road, and she didn't know there was a second turbine plan. Now, you're going to hear a lot of information tonight about how much information there was in the general public. But if you go back to Judge Ruffo, Judge Ruffo is saying, it's not knowledge of a project. It's knowledge that a building permit has been issued, and a party, a complaining party, has six years to initiate an enforcement request, and that's a decision of our legislature. Our legislature wrote Section 7 and said- Our legislature wrote Section 7 and said, "You can create an enforcement effort anytime within six years from the issuance of the building permit." But Gallivan and Connors and Richardson would say, "But not if you knew too much during the 30 days." And I submit to you that Linda Okagawa didn't. My other clients are Barry and Diane Funfar. They were involved during this key 30-day period, let's say, in the last third of that 30-day period, invoicing concern about Wind One. And your counsel said to you at our last meeting, "Let's not forget a duty to inquire." I don't know whether a duty to inquire might have arisen during those 30 days. I have an affidavit from the Funfars, like the one from Linda, saying that I knew nothing about the building permit, and that is true. But with Linda Okagawa, certainly, any duty to inquire wouldn't have arisen until October, many months after the building permit had been issued. So then you're down to the doctrine of latches. And latches will only apply if someone sat on their rights to the detriment of the other party. And here, I'm not going to go into my latches argument, other than to say that in my legal memo, I went carefully through everything that the town knew about and decided was okay with them enough that they would proceed with Wind Two, even though the manufacturer of the turbine was issuing a serious warning and asking them to sign off on responsibility, and even though there were many meetings happening at the town to deal with the problems from Wind One. By that time, the town had not purchased the turbine, transported it, erected it, or tested it. Yes, they had built the foundation. It's true. The town will tell you, they built the foundation for Wind Two, they signed the contract January 15, 2010, and by the time this 30-day period unfolded, they were well through building the foundation. I don't know how much of the total $5 million cost that might be. But here, they had a supplier refusing to sign the supply contract until the town signed off, which it finally did. That was a big red flag, and the town could have stopped Wind Two at that point and saved the bulk of the money it cost to build Wind Two. Now, no one wants to abandon a foundation once it's in, and this was a turbine paid for by the federal government through the stimulus package. And I think the town was so determined to get this built, that even though there were many, many complaints about Wind One and warnings about Wind Two, they decided to proceed anyway. In that case, I believe, and I wrote this in my memo, had Linda Okagawa commissioned an enforcement request in October of 2010, it would have been the least of the town's problems. There's no doubt in my mind that the town would not have said, and you may hear them say this tonight, "Oh, if only Linda had filed that in October of 2010, we would have halted the work on Wind Two." I don't think that's the case, and my legal memo expresses all of the things that were happening that convinced me that this wasn't a detriment. The town was already involved, as of August 25, 2010, in one claim that a special permit should have been procured. It knew Wind Two was similarly situated. This is no surprise. And what we did, Linda and the Funfars, is waited to see if this was a good legal claim, and we filed this new request within the six-year statutory period, once we knew it was a good legal claim. Now I have the affidavits I mentioned, which I'd like to submit to the clerk. And Diane and Barry Funfar are not here tonight. Their daughter Kristy is. She has two statements. She does not require a lot of time. Also, Linda Okagawa is here. I'm not going to describe the distress that she experiences. I'd like her to do that. She knows that she has two minutes. She won't take much of your time, but I would, since I have not gone into the distress, I would hope that even though I represent Linda and Kristy's parents, that you would allow them, whenever there is public comment, to describe the distress from Wind Two. Thank you very much.
Are you going to ask questions, or do you want the town to go forward?
Well, I guess that we can see what the board would like to do. Does everybody feel prepared to ask questions? Do you want more time to review the materials?
Good evening, and thank you, members of the board. At the outset, I would just like to say, first of all, Diane Tilletson, sorry, representing the town of Falmouth. At the outset, I would like to say that even though the Funfar, Ms. Funfar, and Ms. Okagawa may be making remarks during the so-called "public comment" period, that they are applicants. They are not public, members of the public, as the board usually describes those members of the public. So I believe that what I am going to present to you is a fairly significant departure in the description of both the law and the facts from what you heard from attorneys Watt and Senni. And I'd like to start out by saying that the standards that the cases and the statutes prescribe are objective standards. They're not standards that are different depending on who you are and what information you choose to avail yourself of or not. So with that, I'm going to start, and I'm going to reserve a little bit at the end of my time, because there are very, there are two major portions of our presentation. The first is whether the applicants for zoning enforcement here were on either constructive, were on constructive notice. We don't contend that they had actual notice of the issuance of the building permit. That's not something at issue. But we believe they had constructive notice. And secondly, even if it could be argued that they did not have constructive notice, whether they were guilty of latches in this case. And finally, whether, even if they get by what are commonly referred to as the jurisdictional hurdles here, whether the board in this case should grant any relief on an equitable basis. And the one thing that I did agree with, that counsel stated, was that Wind Two is a very different set of circumstances from Wind One. On the equitable relief front, both Julie and Suso, and the town manager and the Assistant Town Manager, Heather Harper, are going to speak very briefly towards the end of this slide presentation. It's all part of the same PowerPoint. So we can start with the first slide. The first question for you to determine is whether the applicants for relief were on constructive or inquiry notice, such that the appeal of the building permit for Wind Two should have been filed with the ZBA on or before April 17, 2010. And again, I think that's been fairly well-covered in terms of what that 30-day period is. It's a very strict period in the zoning statute. What I would suggest is a little bit different from what you heard from both Attorney Senni and Attorney Watt, is that under the Gallivan case, which was a Massachusetts appeals court case decided in 2008, and granted, the facts were different in that case, the Gallivan plaintiffs had actual notice. However, the court went further than looking at the facts of this case and decided that if you have notice, any notice, whether it's actual or constructive during that 30-day appeal period, you don't have a choice. You can't sit back and wait until six years have expired, or just before the end of the six-year expiration date, and avail yourself of the other statute of limitations. If you have constructive notice, you have to bring your claim within that 30-day period. Constructive notice is evidence sufficient, and this is quote, right out of one of the cases, "to impose a duty of inquiry on a party concerning a building permit's issuance. Abutting property owners have a duty to inquire concerning potential development that impacts their property." Next slide. "The town's plans to acquire, install, operate Wind Two were well-known in the community, and the applicants were on a list of abutters who were given regular updates by the town's energy committee of the town's plans concerning Wind Two. I know that there's some contention, 'Oh, we didn't get these letters, we didn't open our mail, it looked like junk mail.'" They were sent regular notice by the town's energy committee. "At a special town meeting on July 29, the town meeting voted to construct Wind Two and appropriate $5 million for the design and construction. The town energy committee announced several months later, in September of 2009, at a public meeting, that they were about to begin the construction phase for Wind Two." Next slide. Wind One, there was a public dedication ceremony on January 15, 2010. That was widely, the public was invited. It was attended by officials, by several neighbors. The Wind Two plans were discussed at that public dedication ceremony, and it was announced and reported widely in the Cape Cod Times and other media that the contract for Wind Two had been signed the day before. These are dates to help the context. Building permit for Wind Two was issued on March 18, 2010. Wind One first began operations, first began spinning on March 23, 2010. The town kept a log of the complaints it received from everyone, everyone and anyone. The very first complaint regarding Wind One was received from Mr. Anderson, and it was logged in on March 30, 2010, a week after Wind One began operating, and two weeks after the permit for Wind Two had issued. By March 30, still within the 30-day appeal period, the abutters and the applicants here were aware that a construction contract had been awarded for Wind Two. That had been publicly announced. They were aware that the town meeting had voted to appropriate funds to construct Wind Two, and they knew Wind Two was coming. They had already begun to complain about the impacts from Wind One, and they knew or reasonably could have known that no ZBA special permit had been sought or obtained for either Wind One or Wind Two. This letter, important letter, coming from the town's energy committee. Now, it doesn't mention the building permit. It was sent April 5, 2010, to every abutter, and included in the packet, by the way, is a list of every abutter, every person who received these town energy committee mailings. And it includes all the applicants for zoning relief here. This letter went to all the abutting neighbors, to everybody within 900 feet of the property line, and basically advised everyone that the construction contract had been let, that they were proceeding with construction plans to erect Wind Two. And again, this letter went to everybody still within the 30-day appeal period. "The information in the public domain on Wind Two and Wind One, and Wind One's actual operation, was certainly sufficient to impose on the abutters a duty to inquire and monitor whether the permits had issued. Abutters could have easily determined that fact with a phone call, with an email, or a visit to town hall." Excellent. The cases essentially support the fact that this type of notice is constructive notice sufficient to raise a duty of inquiry, so that these applicants should have picked up the phone, should have gone down to town hall, should have done what they did several years later in terms of appealing this permit. This is a case that actually is a town of Falmouth case that you may recognize. Allison versus Haddad, I think it's known locally more as the Campanella case, was a land court case. And that case held that a request for enforcement is untimely, where a party fails to challenge a building permit promptly after a building is erected and visible to all. Now in this case, in our case, the Wind Two certainly wasn't visible within that 30-day period, but Wind One was, and the foundation for Wind Two had already started going up. Abutting property owners are charged with the obligation to take notice of surrounding properties and potential impacts to their own property. The very fact that the first turbine was called Wind One and not Falmouth One, and the fact that two turbines had been in the plan from almost the very inception of the plans to put these turbines up, should have put these folks on notice that Wind Two was coming, sufficient to make that inquiry. And again, this was a decision that affirmed the town of Falmouth ZBA decision, your decision, which dismissed the appeal on standing grounds. Next. Gavin versus Haas is another case that Attorney Senni was involved in, where abutters to a turbine in Kingston challenged the issuance of a building permit by means of a request for enforcement first made over three months after the building permit issued. Now in this case, the judge didn't focus a whole lot of attention as to whether he was really discussing this in the context of constructive notice or latches, but the court did dismiss the complaint, finding that the abutters had adequate notice that the building permit would be issued. And this was a situation such as the one that we have here. There was enough notice in the public domain that the members of the public, and these abutters certainly, who lived close to the turbine, had adequate notice that the building permit was coming, and they should have been calling town hall, essentially, to find out when it was issued. That's essentially what Gavin versus Haas says. "They took no action to inform themselves of the permit's issuance, again, even though all the information was necessary to determine the grounds for appeal was available at town hall." That's what the Haas case says, and that's exactly the situation we have here. Next slide. Even if you conclude that they somehow, the abutters, were not on constructive notice that the permit was issued within that 30-day period, the doctrine of latches, I suggest to you, there is more than adequate evidence to find that they were guilty of unreasonable delay or negligence in pursuing a right or claim in a way that prejudices a party against whom relief is sought, i.e. the town. And I know Mr. Watt made some comments about the town's contract on Wind Two, and I believe that Julie and Suso is going to address that. The abutters first challenged the building permit for Wind One in August 2010. They waited five years to challenge the building permit for Wind Two in July of 2015. Why is that important? The grounds for the challenge were exactly the same. In 2010, this board heard, and the building commissioner was faced with a challenge as to whether or not a special permit was needed. That is exactly the same argument that is made before you tonight, that, but the abutters waited five years to bring that identical challenge. They're represented by the same counsel. Counsel knew the grounds for the challenge. Again, even if you could argue that they didn't have constructive notice, waiting five years after bringing the first challenge is unexcusable. Next slide. This case, excuse me, DeWolf versus Apovian, another land court case, where the plaintiffs' claims were dismissed, where the plaintiffs waited four years to raise objections to a completed building. Again, you heard the Wind Two began operations in January of 2012. Here, that there is a delay of two and a half to three years between the time that the turbine was actually up and in people's face and began operations. Next slide, please. In June 2010... In June 2010, abutters observed technicians in the field setting up the equipment for Wind Two. This was in Attorney Senni's submission. In September 2010, the building commissioner denied requests for enforcement on Wind One, again, on exactly the same grounds as here. October 2010, Mr. Donald had conversation with Linda Okagawa about Wind Two, and she says, according to Attorney Senni's submission, that she began doing research on Wind Two in October of 2010. She was represented by Attorney Senni then. There was no reason not to file a complaint, if not within 30 days of the permit's issuance, certainly by October of 2010. February 23rd, 2012, Wind Two began operations after public notice. It operated at full power for one month in order to gather feedback from the neighborhood. And Heather Harper will address that in a moment as well. There is a timeline, there are actually two timelines that you have in the materials I submitted. One was prepared by Frank Duffy, Town Council, and the second was prepared by the town's human resources manager in connection with the wind turbine options process, and it lays out when each of these events took place. Next slide, please. In this case, Richardson versus Chilmark, this was actually my case and had gone on for quite a while. In the Town of Chilmark, the land court judge dismissed the appeal in that case, finding that where the plaintiff in that case had brought several other challenges to the same building project, she had filed a wetlands challenge, a DEP challenge, and several other challenges, all of which were unsuccessful. And then, about five and a half years after the fact, brought a zoning challenge and claimed that she didn't know about the building permit. Her lawyer had filed all of these other challenges, and the land court judge held that she was on constructive notice in that case and should have brought the appeal within the 30-day period. But when it went up to the appeals court, the appeals court agreed that she had constructive notice, but also noted that latches was an independent ground to dismiss the challenges to the building permit where the delay was unjustified, unreasonable, and prejudicial, and resulted in improper claim splitting. We also have a case in here of improper claim splitting. This case, and you have heard both Attorney Watt and Attorney Senni say, well, we weren't going to bring a challenge to Wind Two until we found out whether we won the case on Wind One. They could have combined, easily filed those appeals together, and the court could have decided those cases together, alleviating the necessity for this board to have to consider the Wind Two matter separately, and frankly, potentially eliminating yet another case that would be litigated. The court would find that improper. They found it improper in Richardson versus Chilmark. And again, it's important to note in that regard that both Linda Okagawa and the Andersons have the same attorney. This is not a case where there was a lot of shuffling. People were aware of the grounds for the appeal and just didn't bring it. I'd like to make one more comment, just in response to one of Attorney Senni's comments. Whether or not the town would have done something different if the appeal had been filed is not really the issue. The issue is that the abutters in this case sat on their rights. Neither Mr. Senni nor Mr. Watt know what the town might have done, would have done, if this second appeal had been lodged, but at least it would have given the town the opportunity to respond to it in the same way that they had the opportunity to respond to and litigate the issue with respect to Wind One. And I would respectfully suggest that whether or not there's any doubt in Chris Senni's mind about whether the town would have done anything differently is really not the standard under these cases. It's whether or not the town proceeded in good faith, and the town certainly know. We heard a lot of comments that the town was on notice because Wind One had been appealed. The town was on notice that Wind One had been appealed, but they also could have reasonably believed that Wind Two was not as much of an issue. And in fact, Wind Two did not receive nearly as many complaints as Wind One throughout the process. So the town looked at and saw Wind Two on a very different footing from Wind One. And again, whether or not there's doubt about what the town might have done, they didn't have the opportunity, and anything that either Mr. Senni or Mr. Watt suggests to the contrary is pure speculation at this point. The second question is whether or not there is a basis for the relief that they're seeking at this time. The town was at all times, whoops, that's okay.
Is that part of your play?
No, you can go back too, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. And whether the issuance of a cease and desist order is appropriate. And this is the second leg of the analysis that you're going to be asked to make. And again, you made this analysis last time with respect to Wind One. I would respectfully suggest that whether or not that particular issue, whether or not the cease and desist was justified on Wind One, Wind Two stands on a different footing. And I'd like to also take the opportunity at this time to address some, not all, of the misstatements that were made in Mr. Senni's presentation on the 17th. The town was not negligent, they did not delay, and they proceeded at all times in good faith. And I know that that was not, from listening to the deliberations of this board after the hearing last time, I know that that was not the board's conclusion, but I do want to point out a few things. I'm not going to focus on the sound analysis because we will have a sound expert coming to do part of the presentation on the special permit, and I don't want to belabor that point now, but there are some other fairly critical points that I'd like to mention. The first, the town was thorough, careful, and reasonable throughout the process. The town and the town's energy committee proceeded with diligence and sought help from capable consultants and experts. This wasn't something they were doing on just a whim. Town and town's energy committee consistently involved and informed the public from the outset of the process. Next. The town proceeded without delay when there were complaints in hearing, reviewing, and responding to abutter complaints. And I don't think you'll hear anything different from the abutters because I know that the town's energy committee, the town's assistant manager, were all over the complaints. The town, we heard a lot at the last hearing, and again, I need to put this in context. There was a lot of discussion about, oh, we waited five years, we delayed, we delayed, we delayed. The town filed a special permit for Wind One shortly after the re-script was entered by the Superior Court that basically said, we had to do it. When we were ordered to do it, we did it. Next slide. The town had every reasonable belief that that special permit was not necessary, and I'll get to that in a moment. The town policy, again, which has been attacked, the goal was to harness wind energy for the benefit of the town to avoid long-term reliance on fossil fuels and sustain the growing cost of municipal operations. The project goal was overall environmental, energy, and economic sustainability. Next slide. As early as January 27th, 2005, the energy committee began to send regular communications to all the abutters, including the folks who are the complainants here, keeping them abreast of all the developments for both Wind One and Wind Two. Megan Amsler was diligent and mailed, again, you have a mailing list in your materials that essentially has all the names of everyone that got these letters, and that list includes the applicants for zoning relief here. Next slide. The town didn't skip the special permit process. We heard that term used, ad nauseam during the last presentation. The decision of the building commissioner determined that the turbine, which supplies power to the town's wastewater treatment plant, was a municipal purpose exempt from the special permit process under Chapter 240, Section 30B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw. That decision was consistent with other decisions made by the building commissioner, recognizing the exemption for other municipal purposes even where a special permit would otherwise be required in a public use district. For example, the DPW garage and the radio tower at 416 Gifford Street, both of those would have required a special permit had the building commissioner not determined them to be public uses. And I have also in your materials is a one-page memo from Aladio Gore, the building commissioner, basically outlining the other exemptions for municipal purpose that he's given that would have otherwise required a building permit. So again, this wasn't a sleight of hand, it wasn't something that the town was trying to avoid or skip. It was a thoughtful decision based on a reasonable interpretation of the zoning bylaw by the building commissioner. That was upheld, by the way, by the Superior Court. The appeals court did reverse, but at least a Superior Court judge found that interpretation reasonable. Next slide. This is the letter that, or the memo that was prepared, again, and signed by Aladio Gore, essentially providing the exemption. The KEMA study, we've heard a lot about it. We've been told, oh, the KEMA study said you had to apply for a special permit. Yes and no. First of all, the KEMA study, just to be clear, was not an acoustic study. It was essentially a feasibility study. It was a report reviewed by the town engineer and Mass CEC staff and developed in accordance with industry standards. It included a turbine size range, and this goes to another misrepresentation, I would suggest in Mr. Senni's prior presentation. Turbine size ranged from 660 kilowatts to 2.5 megawatts, and the Vestas 1.65 megawatt that was selected was well under that 2.5. The KEMA study recommended private developer models. A private developer model would have required a special permit under the town's bylaw. There's no question about that. So when the statement is made constantly that the KEMA study said we had to get a special permit, well, they did, but they were focused on a private development model, not on the town-owned model that was ultimately selected because it allowed the town to receive environmental and other benefits from the project that otherwise would not have been available to the town. These next two slides, I think, are significant. Again, to have listened to Mr. Senni's presentation on the 17th of September, one would have thought that this 1.65-megawatt turbine was wheeled in in the dark of night and somehow put up when everybody was expecting to see a much smaller 660-kilowatt or in that range turbine. Beginning March 26th, 2007, the letter from the energy committee goes again to all the abutters. Basically says, we're thinking something in the range of 1.5 megawatts. Next slide. April 22nd, 2009, a year before the turbine goes up, 1.65-megawatts. This is sent to all the abutters of the turbine. Again, the abutters had plenty of notice as to the size of the turbine at that point. Next slide. In terms of adverse weighing harms, and again, this gets, and I know this is difficult because this is a very emotional, very emotional topic for a lot of people. And although I do not question the sincerity of the applicants for zoning relief, I believe that their impacts are vastly overstated. There is no scientific evidence or data that links sound from wind turbine disease to any health, adverse health impact, link sound from wind turbines, I'm sorry, to disease or any other adverse health impact. Just last week, or on October 19th, the Falmouth Board of Health sent a letter to this board, I believe, and also to the Board of Selectmen, saying that, or urging you to review the effects of wind turbines based on peer-reviewed scientific literature. Again, we're going to have a sound expert, we're also going to have a health expert during the special permit process. But in a very recent, peer-reviewed epidemiological study, and there haven't been a lot of those done, the most comprehensive assessment to date of potential association between wind turbine noise and sleep, the conclusion was, the study found no evidence of an association between exposure to wind turbine noise and the prevalence of self-reported or measured health effects beyond annoyance. And that's important. Are we talking about a harm, or are we talking about people being annoyed? Next point. Study results do not support an association between outdoor wind turbine noise up to 46 dBA and an increase in the prevalence of disturbed sleep. This 2015 study is consistent with a wind study impact, the findings of an independent panel that was prepared for DEP and the Mass Department of Public Health back in January of 2012. Insufficient evidence that noise from wind turbines directly causes health problems, again, independent from the effect of annoyance. Available evidence shows that infrasound levels near wind turbines cannot impact the vestibular system. There's no evidence for a set of health effects from exposure to wind turbines that can be characterized as wind turbine syndrome, and shadow flicker does not pose a risk of eliciting seizures. Next. And again, the issue comes down to whether there was any actual harm or impact on health or whether these people are annoyed, and as a result of being so thoroughly annoyed, are essentially almost creating their own harm. There's no documented or objectively supported health impact. Abutters, they've continued to live in the proximity of the town and the noticed turbines for five years. There's no evidence of adverse impact on their property values, no recording of sound that they claim to hear has ever been submitted to any board. Moreover, there are the same model turbine, two Vestas V82 turbines belong to Mount Waukesha Community College, one is 850 feet from a hospital. Hall has, no complaints have been lodged. Hall, Massachusetts, has a Vestas 1.8-megawatt turbine larger than ours. Nearest home is within 500 feet, and there are more than 20 homes located, including a large apartment complex located within 1,000 feet. The Gardner and Hall turbines operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The town was very responsive to the concerns of residents. Over two years ago, the Board of Selectmen authorized a financial settlement with the Andersons. I was surprised to learn of this after listening to Mr. Anderson at the last hearing, who told us in painful detail how he drove his wife around to get away from the sound of the turbines and how it was his only alternative. There was a settlement that was presented to the Andersons through their attorney, and the Andersons made a counterproposal, asking for more. The town agreed to those additional terms. It went to the Board of Selectmen. It went to the Board of Selectmen. Settlement involved the purchase of the Andersons' home at its fair market value, pre-Wind I, because they said that that would devalue the property. It would be established by a panel of appraisers. Board of Selectmen had agreed to sponsor an article at a town meeting. And the proposal also included a monthly rental allowance for up to 12 months for interim housing and a moving expense allowance. All of these proposals were put in writing to them. The Andersons rejected their own counterproposal. Next slide, please. A cease-and-desist order on Wind II would be unnecessarily punitive, given the town's efforts, which you'll hear more about in one second, to work with the neighborhood and the court, and the court-ordered curtailment of Wind II. The Butters have consistently stated that the sound from Wind I and the notice turbines are dominant over Wind II. And the background, and the background noise from the four-lane highway, Route 28, between Wind II and the closest Abutter masks the sound of Wind II between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., which are the only hours that we can legally operate at the time. I'm going to, next slide? Yeah, I'm going to turn this part of the presentation over to Julian, but before I do, I'd just like to make one more remark on the constructive notice latches, in response to a lot of the remarks made by Mr. Senni and the affidavits submitted by his clients. I believe this was wrongly attributed to Thomas Jefferson, but there is a saying that "The price of democracy, or the price of liberty, is eternal vigilance." And I don't think that we, in a democratic society, can sit back and ignore the mail, not pay attention to town meetings, not make ourselves aware of what is in our surrounding environment, and then complain when the results are not to our liking. That is a classic latches argument, and I think the town has more than established both constructive notice and latches. And I'm going to turn it over to Julian.
Thank you, Attorney Tolson, and I know you're more prepared. I just want to note, so that went 35 minutes, and I think, given the fact that last hearing, Mr. Senni was afforded an ample amount of time to speak, I thought it appropriate, and I didn't want to cut you off, but I just wanted to get the board's sentiment on moving forward. How much more time do you want to afford to the town?
I think we have less than five minutes to go.
Okay. I would think if the board's...
With your, and I think we're still well under the time.
I believe that you probably are. I just wanted to get the feel of the board and...
Thank you very much. Appreciate your indulgence.
...be fair to both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. As Town Manager Julian Susso, I do appreciate the opportunity to make a few brief remarks. The PowerPoint slide in front of you, you have a copy of, of course. It's a summary, as you'll note, of the estimated range of fiscal impacts for potential shutdown of both Wind I and Wind II. It's based on an annualized, including a six-month cessation. I will not comment about it further. I believe it's self-explanatory. But I would like to read some excerpts from another document that you have that I prepared called "A Summary of Revenue and Expenses." You have that in your packet, so I will read a few of those excerpts as I may, if I may. The wind turbines serve a clear municipal purpose. They provide electricity to run the wastewater treatment facility, and they're connected to it behind the meter, so that the plant uses electricity directly and most cost-effectively without an intermediary electric company. Very important. Given the present operating configuration, the wind turbines do not provide all electric power for the treatment plant, and the town must purchase electricity from Eversource during all times of turbine shutdown or when there is insufficient wind. The wind turbines may generate excess power at certain, very limited, times. This excess power is routed through the plant's electric meter in a process known as net metering and sold to Eversource. Eversource pays the town for this electricity. These payments are deposited to an account authorized by Article 18 of the November 9, 2009 Annual Town Meeting, and they're used to offset other energy-related expenses of the town. In fiscal year 2014, these payments amounted to $386,901. And in FY 2015, just recently completed, these payments amounted to $395,933. If the wind turbines cease operation, this revenue will be lost and must be replaced in the budget with tax revenue. Wind I is currently not operating, as you're aware, and if it remains inoperative for a period of six months, the lost revenue will be approximately $200,000 to $230,000. Wind I was installed and commissioned in 2010, as you've heard. It was at a cost of approximately $5.2 million. The purchase and construction was financed by three financial transactions. The town borrowed $4.9 million and issued municipal bonds in the same amount payable over a 20-year period. In addition, the town entered into two agreements to sell the renewable energy certificates, or REX, the acronym by which they're known, representing the electricity generated by Wind I. One agreement was dated May 17, 2010, and is with the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative. The other agreement was dated July 29, 2009, and is with the Massachusetts Technology Park Corporation, now known as the Mass Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. Both of these agreements have expired and have been replaced by an amended and restated Renewable Energy Certificates Purchase Agreement dated June 3, 2015, between Mass Clean Energy Technology Center and the Town of Falmouth. As previously noted, the town borrowed $4.9 million and issued municipal bonds in the same amount payable over a 20-year period. Two bond transactions were involved, $4 million and $992,000. There is attached to my statement an affidavit with debt service schedules for these loans. Both of these transactions were completed based on anticipated revenue from the sale of electricity to Eversource by the net metering process outlined above, and from the revenue from the sale of the renewable energy certificates. The town's payment for 2014 was $421,637.50. For 2015, it was $417,168.76. The town's payment for FY 16 will be $407,707. The total payments over the 20-year period, that's the bond period, are $6.9 million. If the wind turbines are shut down or fail to operate a sufficient number of hours daily, the town will be required to make these payments with general tax revenue, as there will be no income from the sale of electricity or renewable energy certificates to make these payments. The debt due cannot be prepaid and must be paid in full over the 20-year bond period. The amended and restated Renewable Energy Certificates Purchase Agreement is currently in force. Under the terms of this agreement, the town agrees to sell the Mass Clean Energy Center all renewable certificates attributable to energy produced by Wind I every year. The Mass CEC has made a lump sum payment to the town of $1,010,623, which has already been expended to finance the construction of Wind I. In the event of a default caused by shutdown of Wind I, the town must refund this amount to the Mass Clean Energy Center. The Clean Energy Center will continue to pay the town for renewable energy certificates delivered according to a schedule of estimated production. The agreement contains a schedule for that estimated production. If the town fails to meet the estimated production, it shall pay in each year a stipulated payment of $42 for each renewable energy certificate shortfall. If the wind turbines are shut down, the estimated payment for the last six months of fiscal year 2016, the current fiscal year, is $65,000, and for fiscal year 2017, it's The stipulated payment for a complete and permanent shutdown would be $42 per rec times 48,924 recs, for a total of $254,808 due. The town will be required to make all these payments with general revenue from taxpayers, as there will be no income from the sale of electricity or recs to make the payments. Nearly done with this brief summary. Wind II was installed and commissioned in 2012. Its financing differs significantly from the Wind I financing. Wind II cost approximately $5 million to acquire and install. It was financed by a loan/grant from the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, otherwise known as the TRUST. Loan funds originated with the US, United States, under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009, otherwise known as ERA. To summarize the terms of that loan agreement and the project regulatory agreement, the total loans of 4.865 million were dispersed to the town to acquire and to install Wind II. The original interest rate is 0%. The loan qualifies for full principal forgiveness under certain conditions, namely that the town operate and maintain, in clear English, Wind II as an energy efficiency project. By this, it is clearly understood that Wind II must be continuously operated as a source of renewable energy. If Wind II ceases to operate as an ongoing source of renewable energy, the loan forgiveness disappears, and the town owes $4.865 million plus interest, now at 2%. When I learned that the operation of Wind II maybe might be jeopardized by the present and other litigation, I inquired of the TRUST about the application of loan forgiveness under the circumstances of potential injunctive shutdown. By a letter to me dated April 2, 2013, the TRUST advised in clear English the town that if Wind II is used in a manner not consistent with energy efficiency project, and I quote, "The TRUST will not be able to approve the request made by the town and will not be allowed, the town will not be allowed to utilize the ERA funds with principal forgiveness," end quote. Clear English. A copy of the letter has been transmitted to this board. The town does not know, and the TRUST will not reveal, at what point it would consider an injunctive shutdown to be a default and result in an accelerated repayment. What is clear is the town will be required to refund 4.865 million in a lump sum with general tax revenue and any other available cash. The town cannot borrow to repay indebtedness, as such borrowing is not permitted under Massachusetts general law. Only a future special act of the legislature could authorize such an unusual borrowing. The town believes the wind turbines must continue to be operated for significant hours each day to meet this requirement and avoid repayment. In the event of a shutdown of Wind I, the town will lose all the electricity generated by the wind turbine, and will be required to appropriate approximately $60,000 each fiscal year from tax revenue, this is beyond the dollars I've already spoken about, to pay for the purchase of supplemental electricity for the wastewater treatment facility. Remember, they were cited to power the energy needs of that plant. If both wind turbines are shut down, that cost will leap to $120,000 annually. And I'll just go back to the slides for a moment. As I noted, closure of Wind II would violate federal regulations and the terms of the project regulatory agreement, Wind II required, of Wind II required to operate as an energy efficiency project. The Mass DEP letter addressed to me dated April 2, 2013, makes that clear. I know earlier you heard a fanciful spin on that letter, which involves somebody's interpretation, but I know the members of this board can read the plain English in the letter, just as I did, and recognize what's clearly at stake here. Next slide, please. The town has consistently attempted to work out a reasonable accommodation. That's been demonstrated. We've offered a comprehensive and reasonable settlement to Anderson, and furthermore, accepted in writing the Andersons' counteroffer, which they subsequently walked away from.
That is wrong.
Excuse me, sir. They're allowed to speak freely, and you won't have time to comment in response.
The facts are clear and available. The town is engaged in a comprehensive wind turbine options process we've spoken about. We'll have a few more comments on it in a few moments. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you.
I want to check in again with the board. How much longer does the town anticipate for its presentation?
About five minutes.
How is the board feeling? Would you like to hear it?
What order?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Excuse me, sir. I'm in charge. I'm going to allow her to speak. The board has allowed time for the town to speak. We've agreed to that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Heather Harper. I'm the Assistant Town Manager. Throughout the last five years of this project, I've worked under the direction of five different Boards of Selectmen and two Town Managers. I've been asked to share some of the highlights of the town's thoughtful and deliberative response to the well-known and well-documented concerns about our community's wind energy facilities. The town's approach and response has been, had a good faith effort. At the first sign of complaint, we immediately contacted the operator. The operator sent operations and maintenance staff, including design engineers who designed the Vestas V-82. They slept on-site for at least two nights to determine what the neighbors were experiencing. There was an issue identified, it was corrected and repaired. The town also immediately engaged in a collaborative process with the neighbors to the wind turbines. In fact, I received a letter and typed words from the attorney who was engaged within several weeks of the operation of Wind I, recognizing the swift response of the town in taking action in response to concerns from our neighbors. They participated in the scoping of that sound study and approved the scope of services prior to its issuance. A tracking system was established, so the town could learn more about the complaints, the conditions, the time, the wind conditions, and what neighbors were experiencing. This monitoring was coordinated with the Board of Health. You can find records on file with communications to Dr. Dale Harkness, and, excuse me, Dr. Harkness, and the Board of Health, dating back several years. As you know, and you heard earlier this evening, the Board of Health has routinely taken up and deliberated on the issue of health effects. For the better part of five years, the Board of Health has been evaluating this issue. And they sent you a letter two weeks, a week ago, as of October 19, and they've drawn the conclusion that the Canadian study finding is appropriate, and that there is no evidence of the health effects associated with wind turbines. Next slide, please. There were many personal meetings with neighbors. Those meetings included the Town Manager, myself, the Building Commissioner, board members, selectmen, Board of Health members. The town staff and the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health made a commitment to ongoing tracking and problem-solving. An electronic communication system was established, and regular updates were provided to anyone willing, interested in participating in that. This is one of the updates issued, and you can't see in here, but you can in your book. There's also a note in the summer of 2010, some information about what was going on with Wind II, and that went as an electronic summary to many, many community members. I want to talk a little bit about the wind turbines option process. It was a very serious and genuine effort on behalf of the Town of Falmouth, and all involved. The town reached out directly to Lawrence Suskind, city planner and mediator with MIT, and founder of the Consensus Building Institute. We sought and successfully earned external assistance to fund this effort. There are 25 meetings held over eight months. Two members of the Board of Selectmen were present at every meeting, as were the Town Managers. This process was transparent. All document requests were honored, new studies were developed, and most meetings were recorded and are still available for viewing on the Wind Turbine Options Process website. As you may know, the Board of Selectmen voluntarily reduced the operations of both wind turbines to encourage our neighbors to participate in this consensus building process. While the town did not anticipate full consensus as a result of that process, we had hoped to find some common ground. Unfortunately, that was not the result. The position of our neighbors hardened. The town was very grateful to have our Human Services Director involved in the wind turbine options process. Karen Cardaria was willing to serve as one of the staff stakeholders. We did not ask town management, we didn't ask regulatory officials, we asked our Human Services Director just to represent us in the wind turbine option process. As a human service professional, Ms. Cardair understood one basic element of consensus building, and that was to try and find agreement on the facts. Toward that end, she developed a six-year timeline of events and expanded and sustained that timeline throughout the process. The timeline is in your binder and was referred to by Attorney Tolson. The timeline is in your binder and was referred to by Attorney Tillotson. This timeline was routinely and repeatedly raised at wind turbine option process meetings. Though never accepted, discussion about Wind Two routinely occurred during that process, and all of the complainants here this evening were well aware of that and participants. At the conclusion of the wind turbines option process, the Board of Selectmen, again, appropriately reached out to the community. They desired to engage the broader town in the dialogue about how to resolve the concerns related to the Town of Falmouth's wind energy facilities. At the conclusion of that process, the board determined that they would place a ballot question before the townspeople, and at the May 2013 town election, voters overwhelmingly rejected a ballot question to authorize the town to begin a process of decommissioning and taking down the wind turbines. Fifty-four percent of the residents voting in Precinct Six, the location of the wind turbine, voted against decommissioning of the turbines. Finally, the board had the eight months and 25 meetings in which they participated in the wind turbine option process, and they also had the vote of the town, the will of the town, those that we serve. And they then, again, took on an open, caring, and thoughtful process and a continued demonstrated willingness to find a compromise. They announced a three-month-long decision-making process, and following its three months -- could I go back to the next slide, the previous slide, please? The next slide. Thank you. I just want to share with you that you're not intended to read all of those, but to know that those were the public deliberative reports that were prepared for the Board of Selectmen following the wind turbine option process, following the town vote. Those were public. They were publicly noticed. The Board of Selectmen instructed the community on what process it would take to make decisions about the operation of the wind turbines, and they posted each and every one of those reports regularly on the town's website. The board explored the options reviewed by the wind turbine option process. They took a look at mitigation alternatives. They looked at ways that the turbines could generate revenue to support mitigation alternatives. They considered the geographic location of complaints, with the complaints from Wind One, from Wind Two, or whether from the notice turbine that had been operating 365 days a year for several years during that process. They also took a look at the nature of the complaints, the duration, the attributes of the wind, what was going on in the area. Ultimately, they concluded that there were no mitigation alternatives that were available to them, given the hardened positions of the neighbors. The Town of Falmouth has acted in good faith for many years. Following that reporting process, the Board of Selectmen voted to operate their turbines from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, both turbines, and that was really their final operational vote. This was following eight years of planning, seven town meeting votes, and the Board of Selectmen has continued to support the operation of the wind turbines with modified operations for five years after a very thoughtful and deliberative decision-making process. The wind resource in Falmouth and on Cape Cod in our region is valuable. It's an asset that should be preserved for this generation and for all future generations. Over time, this community will change. Our tolerances will change. What will not diminish is our demand for energy and our responsibility to protect the environment and to reduce our reliance on non-renewable resources. We are pleased to have this opportunity to present this to the zoning Board of Appeals. We recognize that this is a local issue. We're glad to have this issue being addressed locally, and we look forward to your discussion and deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I want to check in with the board as to how they would like to proceed, because usually our usual process, and obviously it's a little bit revised for these hearings, is usually we would ask questions, then we invite or public comment. I think my sentiment, and I'll share what I would like to do, and I'd obviously like to hear from you, would be we've received a lot of information, a great deal of information. I certainly have questions, but I think I'll have more questions of the attorneys once I review the information. So I would be inclined to, obviously I know Attorney Sunny and Attorney Watt had asked for several more minutes to speak, then I'd be inclined to invite public comment and then on Wind Two only, and then at the next hearing ask questions, but I don't know how everybody else is feeling. Or if you're feeling.
You know, I had a couple of questions based on Attorney Tillotson's presentation that, just to help me clarify and understand what she was referring to, because there seemed to be two issues. One was the 30-day appeal period, and the other was beyond the 30-day appeal period. And, you know, yeah.
Would you like me to try to address that? Should we?
If that's okay.
Yeah, that is okay. Yeah, I think that's okay, but I also want to say, I don't, personally, I don't want to get into substantive, obviously clarification.
It's just a question, you know, this issue of constructive knowledge. Were you contending that you should have had that knowledge during the 30-day appeal period?
Yes. Yes. I think the 30-day appeal period is the one in the statute, that those three sections of the statute, really Section 8.
And I understand that, but what was the evidence for that she would have that knowledge during the 30 days?
If there is evidence in the environment around you, what's going on around you, put you on inquiry notice, in other words, the turbine, Wind One being up, the fact that the plans for Wind Two had been announced, the construction contract had been let and announced publicly, and a letter was sent telling them essentially that Wind Two was coming, the courts say that that is sufficient to put you on inquiry notice, a duty to inquire. In other words, you just can't sit back and shrug your shoulders.
I get the gist of your argument.
Okay, sorry.
There was a lot of information presented. During that 30-day appeal period, there was a letter sent to the abutters?
Correct.
Is that, because there were many letters you cited. Most of them referenced one turbine going up.
There was, the letter that I'm referring to is April 5, 2010. It's in the materials. It was during the 30-day appeal period, and while it does not say, the building permit was issued, it says, "We are proceeding with plans for Wind Two."
And is that in this?
It is. I believe it's probably about 10 pages in. I can't find it precisely for you, but it is in there.
Okay.
And I think for about the first, maybe seven, eight, nine slides, I tried to outline the factors that I felt provided a constructive basis.
I got that. Okay.
Okay.
For now.
For now. Yeah, and I certainly have a lot of questions, and I'm sure everybody does. I'm just trying to see what the best way to proceed would be, given the amount of information we now have to process and question. So would everybody be comfortable? Do we have the April 5 letter? Are you? Would everybody be comfortable proceeding how I had outlined? Would that be?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Are you comfortable with that, sir?
It's up to the board.
Okay. So then I would invite Attorney Watt and Attorney Sunny, understanding that we will have questions at the next hearing, and then we'll invite some public comment as well.
I think it's the ninth page.
I'll try to keep it to five minutes.
Thank you.
That letter, April 5, says, "We also wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that at the November 2009 Fall Town Meeting, the townspeople voted to install a second turbine at the wastewater treatment facility. Falmouth was selected by the Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust, something by state treasurer Tim Cahill, to receive 4.9 million." It says nothing about construction was imminent, was anticipated at a particular time, even assuming that my clients, the Andersons, received this, and there is no evidence that they received it. There are bare allegations that the letter was mailed, but similar allegations were made in the original Anderson appealed to Superior Court, and Judge Ruffo found specifically that there was no evidence that, in fact, they were mailed. The burden is on the town to show that those were mailed. I really question the town's representation that they've engaged in a continued, caring, thoughtful process. And I think Thomas Jefferson would be shocked at the way the town has behaved throughout this. When it was determined that Wind One required a special permit, would not a continued, caring, thoughtful process also anticipate that the town should go ahead and seek a special permit for Wind Two? They knew they were the same thing. They owe a duty to their townspeople to uphold the bylaws of this town rather than seek some sort of legal loophole that absolves them of obligation. You heard Attorney Tillotson say, "When we were ordered to do it, we did it." Well, that was the only reason. That was the truest statement. Only when they are ordered by a higher authority to do something will they do it. Never did the town voluntarily seek to get a special permit for Wind Two. I really object to the town demonizing my clients, the Andersons. The Andersons have lived here long before the wind projects were even put up, and for some reason, now it's turned around on them, that they continue to live here and somehow, well, that's their problem, that they should just buck up and suffer. Judge Ruffo found specifically that the Andersons were grieved. Judge Muse, in the injunction in the previous nuisance, or the pending nuisance case, found that they were suffering ill effects, and to suggest that the Andersons are not suffering effects is just disingenuous. I'm really shocked that the town has chosen to disclose settlement discussions here in a public forum. It's hornbook law. We learned that in law school. We learn it in anything, that settlement discussions are privileged and that they are not to be used as evidence in any subject, any judicial proceeding. And frankly, I dispute the representations made by counsel, and I'm going to actually request copies of the signed offer agreements by the selectmen that were made to my clients because, to my knowledge, no such signed offers were provided, nor were any settlement discussions that were had, nor were the full terms of those settlement discussions disclosed here tonight. The town finally wants to impose upon the neighbors an obligation to read every newspaper, to take part in every town meeting. Maybe that's an ideal that would be laudable, but we're also a free country that we have the freedom to live our lives as we wish and not have to necessarily embroil ourselves in public discussions. It's concomitant upon the town to prove that the Andersons had notice, and they have not done that. I'll try to be just as brief. Attorney Tillotson mentioned Gavin v. Haas. That's the Kingston turbine case. That's a case that I participated in. I can tell you what that case turned on. During the 30 days, all three turbines installed by Mary O'Donnell appeared. They were set very quickly. By day 18 of the 30 days, all three were visible. Judge Foster felt this was a close call, but he wrote a good decision against my clients saying, "If three turbines appeared within the 30 days, you should have gone down to Town Hall." And my clients accepted that decision and did not appeal it further. Wind Two didn't appear for at least six months, and I think even considerably longer, so I don't think counsel has Gavin versus Haas quite right. The abutters list, there's not just one abutters list. You have been favored with an abutters list showing everyone within 900 feet. As you know, typical zoning abutters lists are 300 feet from a property. There are more than one abutters list mentioned in the minutes of the Energy Committee meetings. One list, which we can tell from those meetings was used, mentioned 33 recipients of those letters. I can tell you Linda Okagawa did not get the letter of April 5, 2010, and she appears on the list before you, but I think the town is using very liberally a very large abutters list when, in fact, the Energy Committee didn't use that list on all of these mailings. We don't know if they used that 900-feet-distance list on any of the mailings. And the fact is, the town can't produce any evidence of sending any of these particular mailings out, but you have now a signed affidavit, signed under oath, saying that it wasn't until Malcolm Donald knocked on her door in October that she knew anything about a second wind turbine. I agree with Attorney Watt. I'm shocked that settlement discussions were raised. Attorney Tillotson said two turbines were part of the plan from the very start. That's not true. The KIMA study that began this entire project, which was done in 2005, is for a single turbine at the wastewater treatment plant. Attorney Tillotson said KIMA was not an acoustic study. Finally, one of the attorneys for the town has admitted that, because in all of the litigation, the town's counsel has taken the position that KIMA in 2005, which had contour maps of two GE turbines, not a Vestas, is the only acoustical study ever done before the decisions to build Wind One and Wind Two were made, the only acoustical treatment. Acoustics is two and a half pages of that 54-page KIMA study. It was a feasibility study. The town never did an acoustical study for Wind One, and even when Vestas asked them, "Hey, have you updated your acoustical study before choosing to put Wind Two in?", there apparently was no answer to that email from the town's engineer about whether they did or they didn't update the study. There never was a study. HMMH was a study. It studied the sound pressures from Wind One and the projected sound pressures from Wind Two, and it was ready in September of 2010, after all of the distress was reported and after the town sent a letter to Vestas saying, "We take full responsibility for Wind Two." Attorney Tillotson mentioned wheeled in in the dark. We treat the size of these two turbines as being wheeled in in the dark. There's a reason. The town sent a mailing to the neighbors in 2004 and said it would be the size turbine of Hall, and organized a field trip to Hall, not just one, but two, to Hall One, which was a 660 turbine, and had the town built two 660 turbines. There wouldn't be distress. And in your booklet, the last tab, the booklet I presented to you tonight, you can see the difference in a drawing between a 660 Hall One and the two turbines that were built. None of the warrant articles, the town likes to mention the seven or eight warrant articles on these projects, none, if you read the notice to the public, mentions the size turbine. So there was an affirmative reaching out to the neighbors and saying, "The turbine is going to be the size of Hall One, and you can ask Kathy Elder, who is here, and Barry Funfar. They both went on that field trip to Hall One." The day Wind One appeared, they were shocked at the size, and that's the first time they ever knew the size turbine had changed. Creating their own distress, vastly overstated. I've been a zoning lawyer for 32 years. I have represented people who were not in my backyard people. I know what it looks like, especially neighborhood groups. If there's a new shopping center and a neighborhood is upset about it, I get a few clients, and there's a bell curve. The client group grows, they get more angry, they protest the new shopping center, they take a court appeal, and then you come down the backside of the bell curve, and the clients fade off, they're getting used to this new use in their neighborhood, it's reconciling with the neighborhood, okay, and it drops off to a few, and the matter ends within two years. I have represented people who have been in that position. I have never seen a moment I have never seen a moment of hesitation from this group. It has just been this direction. There's no bell curve here. This group knows what it feels like to try to sleep near Wind One and Two. And the town is trying to get permission to run them at night as well. They're only running during the day, or Wind Two is running during the day at this time. But please believe me, and we can compare pure science to pure science, and we will in connection with the Wind One special permit application, but please believe me, they are not making this up, they are not exaggerating it, this is not a harm that they are creating, this is something they feel. I don't live there, so I can't tell, and none of us live there either. But I have come to believe these clients, and I have come to distinguish them from NIMBY clients who are just upset about new use. Shadow flicker doesn't cause epilepsy. We know that. The flicker isn't at a fast enough pace to cause epilepsy. But Linda Okagawa and other people, like Malcolm Donald, get this strobing effect that's more than the 10 hours a year allowed in the Falmouth zoning bylaws. I know that bylaw doesn't apply because it wasn't in existence at the time, but it's a standard we can look at. Linda presented a log that said it's 40 hours a year. And that's significant. She's not saying she gets epilepsy. She's saying it's very distressing. And the worst thing is, the town has never mitigated shadow flicker. And you know what it would take? Delaying the start of Wind Two an hour and a half, nine months of the year. Not all 12, but nine months of the year. If you delayed it from 7:00 AM to 9:30, it would be gone. Annoyance is not harm. How long has this group had to face the accusations that it's just annoyance? There's something in between annoyance and harm. You know what it is? It's unreasonable interference with the right to use and enjoy your property. There are sound pressures that we have captured, that we will be presenting, with windows and doors closed inside the Anderson home and inside the Okagawa home, that absolutely exactly match blade passage frequency and integer multiples of the blade passage frequency that you can pick up and you can show on a chart. That energy is inside the home. Now, we can disagree on whether that's capable of making someone feel a little bit motion sick in their own home. And I don't know how to make that decision. But I can tell you, I believe my clients when they say, "There's a sense of disequilibrium in my home." Elizabeth Anderson goes to the back bedroom because it's a little bit better there for her. And so when I sent the acoustical engineers in with the low-frequency microphones, I said, "Hey, go into the back bedroom and see." Sure enough, for some strange reason, in that back bedroom, the infrasonic frequencies that match the blade passage rate are lower. So there is something here. It's a very difficult science to dig into. I don't envy your board being in the position that you're in, but I do resent some of the comments that have been made tonight. And I do want to ask that this record be kept open, because I plan to write my rebuttal to these points and submit it. Thank you.
Okay, I think that it makes sense to have some public comment tonight. We are keeping this hearing open, we are going to be asking questions, and we do still have the special permit application tonight. So, you know, time is of the essence as well, we're approaching 8 o'clock. So what I would be inclined to do, and hopefully the board agrees, is that we hear public comment for about 10 to 15 minutes. Don't go past, I guess, 8:05. We can take a short break and then get into the special permit application. Our hearings wrap at 9:30, so that's why I need to balance the two. And like I said, the hearing's still open. I will invite public comment at the next hearing on Wind Two. So if anybody would like to speak, I would...
I'll be very brief, and I'll hand you, the clerk, a few documents. This is related...
Could you please just identify yourself for the record and...
Yeah, Todd Drummy, Blacksmith Shop Road.
Thank you.
There is a lot of confusion about the mailing list. We hear how all the neighbors within this very large distance received all of these mailings over the years. I know I did not receive them until after Wind One started. And I believe this is the mailing list that was used after Wind One started. It's dated April, April 6, 2010. I can't remember where I got this, I believe it was during one of the court cases. There are 129 names on this, and most of the neighbors are on here. So after April, after Wind One started, they used a big list. In the KIMA study, and this is one page from it, "Abutters survey was mailed to approximately 33 residential property owners abutting the site." In the Energy Committee minutes, I believe the town mentioned a letter that was mailed approximately January 27 concerning the weather balloon idea, that was mailed to 33 people. So at one point in time, they were mailing to a much, much smaller list. And that's just the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Moffett. I live in East Falmouth in Precinct Three, and I'm speaking as a resident in Falmouth. In November of 2013, there was a court case in Barnstable. And I went. And it was a terrible rainy day. And I sat in the back, and Frank Duffy was in the front, and the judge said, "Is there an official from Falmouth here?" And Mr. Duffy said, "Rebecca Moffett's here." And the judge looked at me and said, "I would like for you to go into the room with the negotiations with Mr. Duffy and the Andersons, Neil and Betsy." Now, that was all very new to me, but I did as I was told. And we went into a very small room. It was Mr. Duffy, myself, Mr. Watt, Mr. Senni, Neil Anderson, and Betsy Anderson. And the purpose of this was to come to some kind of a negotiated meeting and decisions. I really wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak. I mean, I was very surprised I was in that room. So as the conversations continued from Mr. Duffy, Mr. Senni, and Mr. Watt, I got the gist of things. And I put my hand up, and I said, "Am I allowed to speak?" They said, "Certainly." There was a lot of information about the turbines and how uncomfortable the Anderson family, Betsy and Neil, were living in their home. At some time during this, it became incredibly emotional, incredibly emotional. And in that time, Mr. Anderson said in a voice of distress, "Please help me. Please help me." Well, I certainly thought about that. As the meeting continued, and it wasn't as if there was a timeline, but as the two lawyers representing the family, the Andersons, had finished their case, and Mr. Duffy had finished our case, I thought about those words, "Please help me." I'm now a selectman in Falmouth. And I was a selectman that put together an offer to help the Andersons financially. It was very serious. It was a large amount of money. It was offered, and it was refused. That was very upsetting to me, because I listened to those words, "Please help us." So when I heard from Mr. Senni and from Mr. Watt that they were not aware of a financial offer, I was quite surprised. And I believe in knowing that, it was by pure circumstance that I went to that court hearing, and the judge said, "Is there an official from Falmouth here?" And I was told to go into the room, and what I have said to you is what happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Malcolm Donald, 124 Ambleside Drive. I too was at same court hearing when Selectman Moffett went, the judge Christopher Muse said, "Go down the hall, there's an empty room, I want you to come out with an agreement." Well, I don't know, it took an hour or whatever. And out they came back into the courtroom, and Justice, Judge Muse said, "Have you reached an agreement?" And they said, "We have, Your Honor." And then, what was, he said, "What is the agreement?" And he said, "Well, it's..." And we, they, the attorney said, "It's 12 hours on, 12 hours off, 7 to 7 operation." And he said, "Good." And he said, "We're going to come back in a month's time and see how this is going," or some period of time. Subsequent to that, Selectman Moffett championed 24-hour operation of the wind turbine. She championed it to the town meeting, she championed it to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen talked about it and came up with the 18 hours on and 6 hours off. Now, we went back to court, and Judge Muse wanted to know how the agreement was going. Well, the agreement wasn't being implemented, because the town, you see, was going... Well, Judge Muse was perturbed. He said, "That's not good faith. You didn't..." He said, "You came here, made an agreement, and in my courtroom, an agreement is as good as a decision. Now I will make a decision." And Judge Muse decided that the turbines would only operate 12 hours a day as the original agreement conveyed. But he said additionally, "Those turbines are not going to operate on Sunday, and they're not going to operate on three holidays, Christmas, New Year's, and Thanksgiving," because of how the town didn't uphold their agreement in court. He was very upset. And I'd like to say that the amount of lost revenue because the town did not negotiate, did not hold up their end of the bargain, they welched on their deal, they went back on their word, they've lost 17% of revenue because of that action. Now, second point. I have a presentation that I'd like to make to you. It's only about 45 minutes. It's about how health impacts of wind turbines. Could I, could I do, could I present that?
So we limit public comment to two minutes. The applicants are afforded 15 minutes unless the board welcomes more additional time. And then those represented by counsel, counsel is, you know, the Andersons are represented by counsel, those people who are appealing are afforded time. Public comment is limited to two minutes. So I would...
Okay, well, I guess my...
...surmise that the position of the board, that that's what we would like to stick to.
Absolutely. Okay, I guess, so I guess I'm wondering, all right, so I'm wondering if I can't present on the connection between wind turbine noise and health effects, how can, how can the town's attorney go on and on and on about that? Isn't that kind of irrelevant for what we're here for tonight?
Mr. Donald, I would submit that last time the applicants on the cease and desist were afforded a substantial amount of time, and that this board was allowing the town a substantial amount of time to respond to that, in fairness. You, if you have a slide presentation, you can certainly submit that to the board in hard copy, and that is something that we will look at.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. Also, I'd like to have a comment on WTOP, the wind turbine options process that the Assistant Town Manager talked about. I'd just like to say that, you know, we could only include, I was on that, I was on that part of that deliberative body. And we could only include the facts if they were voted upon by the committee. And so, you know, it was only popular information that actually got into the report. So it had nothing to do whether, whether it was true or not. It was just whether the group wanted to include that fact or not. And then the last item I have is, I'd like to speak regarding Tony Rogers, who was a professional engineer with DNV KIMA, the people that did the initial feasibility study. And he was, he's part of the town's consultant. And he said that if the town were to buy out homes, he'd have to buy 20 to 40 homes, and the cost of that purchase would be somewhere between $8 million and $16 million. Thank you.
Thank you. One last comment for the night, and then, like I said, we will afford time. And I know that a lot of the conversation has turned to the settlement negotiations. You can certainly comment on it, I know that the town commented on it, but we're not here to pass on what did or did not transpire. The focus right now is whether Wind Two should continue running, so...
Correct. Thank you. Neil Anderson, Blacksmith Shop Road. I'm not going to comment at all on the confidential court hearing that we had. It's totally inappropriate. It's totally inappropriate for the Selectman Moffett to talk about that. She shouldn't have been able to continue. Now that it's been made public, anybody who wants to know the details of that offer, our counter offer, come see me. Regarding Wind Two, had not, Building Commissioner Eladio Gore told me that any complaints that I filed to him, any official complaints I filed to him, he's not going to do anything about. I probably would have by this time in the last month filed six or seven official complaints on Wind Two, including today. So Wind Two comes right across, it's 1,000 feet away, 1,000 more feet away than Wind One, but we can see it, it comes right down to the same valley, and it affects us the same way. We're asking you to turn it off, do the right thing, it doesn't have a special permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Neil. Is there a particular wind direction where you feel it's more impactful?
Most particular, yes, prevailing winds, southwest.
Southwest?
Southwest.
Thank you. So we'll cease public comment for the evening because, on this matter, because, like I said, we're keeping it open. And I certainly appreciate that people are here, that people have comments to make, but we do have the special permit application that we need to get to as well. I would ask Attorney...
Do you need to continue this then to a date, time?
Yes. And I thought we, did we speak about, was it November 19? Or is that...
It hasn't been discussed yet.
Okay.
Those are, there were a couple of dates discussed, and it's up to the board to agree to whatever dates the attorneys came up with. I believe November 19 was discussed.
Yeah. And Penn, you're available that night, are you?
Frank, Diane, everybody?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I am, yeah. I'll just double check. Mark, you were going to...
I'll have to change something, but I'll be here.
Yeah, I have to move something, but I can...
It's a Thursday night.
All the board members, it's a Thursday night, and at that time, would you like to deliver?
Six, 6:00.
6:00 PM?
Six.
No, we said...
I can be here earlier if you need to.
They don't want to do it earlier. You guys wouldn't do 5:30, huh?
6:00 PM.
I would do 5:30. I think, I think we'll, we'll say 6:00.
Okay. Thank you. 6 o'clock, everyone.
Of 6815, we'll, we'll vote to continue, 6815 and 70-15.
To November 19, 6:00 PM.
So can somebody please make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, so that's done, and TJ seconded it. So that is for 6815 and 7015, just to clarify?
Just to clarify, yes. At 6 o'clock on the 19th.
At 6 o'clock, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And we'll take a brief recess. Thank you.